Good evening and welcome to the October 13th, 2021 Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting. The Planning and Zoning Commission is a city advisory group for the City Council. They are charged with making recommendations concerning land use plans, planning processes, and/or on matters of plan implementation. A regular meeting of the P&amp;Z are quasi-judicial in nature and are recorded for record retention and minute transcription. A meeting was held at 6:00 in this Chamber Council at City Hall for clarification of the agenda. The following is the agenda of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Discussion and commission action will be limited to those items on the agenda. Any citizen who wishes to address the commission shall first be recognized by the Chair and shall give his or her name and address for the record. If a citizen wishes to read documentation of any sort, the commission, he or she, shall first seek permission from the Chair. There will be a three-minute time limitation to presentations of the commission. This evening's agenda items are Agenda Item Number One, Row Call and Disclosure; Agenda Item Number Two, Approval of Minutes; Agenda Item Number Three, A Public Hearing for a City-Initiated Comprehensive Plan Amendment; Agenda Item Number Four, A Public Hearing for McCormick Ranch Annexation. And I would also like to note that in the agenda, the acres, we have a couple of numbers transposed. In the agenda, it says 49.54 acres, and that should be 54.94 acres.
Forty-five.
Forty-five, nine-four. Forty-five, nine-four. Forty-five, nine-four. That's what I have wrote down. See, I can't even say them without transposing them. So at this time, Aslan, will you please call roll?
Crystal Chanda?
Here, and I have nothing to disclose.
Richard Phillips?
Chair, I made a site visit to Agenda Item Number Four, and I have nothing to disclose.
Nate Roberts?
Present, I have nothing to disclose.
And Sheng Hui Ru?
Present, and I have nothing else to disclose.
And we'll note that Jeremy Marley is unexcused this evening.
Thank you. Agenda Item Number Two is Approval of the Minutes. The commission may wish to waive the oral reading and approve the minutes from the clarification and regular meetings on September 22nd, 2021. Does anybody have any discussion or questions regarding those minutes? If not, I would ask for a motion.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second?
We have a first by Roberts and a second by Phillips. Aslan, will you call vote?
Roberts?
Aye.
Phillips?
Yes.
Chanda?
Yes.
Ru?
Yes.
Your motion carries.
Agenda Item Number Three, Public Hearing, City-Initiated Comprehensive Plan Amendment. Time has been set aside to hear comments from the public concerning the city-initiated comprehensive plan map. Amendment for the property located east of I-15 and west of the Porton of Wellness Complex. The proposal would designate the subject property as mixed-use. Sorry, hang on, these aren't my regular notes. Do we hear from staff, or do I open the public hearing first?
We're the applicant, so you'll have to hear from staff.
So you'll open the public hearing.
Okay. At this time, I would declare the public hearing open, and we would like to hear from staff.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, Commissioned Members. Matthew Lewis, Senior Planner at the City. Planning and Development Services staff received an annexation and zoning application from the property owners of land located west of Porton of Wellness Complex and Fairgrounds Road. The property is encompassing approximately 45.94 acres plus or minus, were recently de-annexed from the city of Chubbuck per ordinance number 835, which I do have a copy of. Under Idaho State Statute Title 50-2223A, allows private landowners to consent to annexation provided that the land is contiguous to the city and the comprehensive plan includes the area of annexation. In this case, the property is contiguous, but is neither within the ACI nor has a comprehensive plan map designation. Therefore, the Planning and Development Services staff has initiated the comprehensive plan map amendment application as before you. The proposed comprehensive plan map designation of mixed-use would be in the community's best interest, based on locations, surrounding land uses, which include the Porton of Wellness Complex, and properties to the north, which are also designated MU. The southernmost properties in North Gate Development are also RCP, zoned RCP, in designation of mixed-use. Possible land uses may include eating and drinking establishment, consumer services, and multifamily dwelling units, which are complementary to the surrounding uses. A 12-inch sewer line is located under Fairgrounds Road and 12-inch water line under Venture When development occurs, improvements such as curb gutter, sidewalk will be required on Fairgrounds Road, with any future development resulting in increase to public health, safety, and general welfare. All other services, such as police, fire, sanitation, can serve the property. All property owners within a 300-foot radius of the land to be changed on a comprehensive plan map have been provided notice of the public hearing in order that they may provide comment on the application. Notice was also published in the Idaho State Journal, and two signs were posted on the southern property. As of completion of the staff report in tonight's hearing, no written comment has been received by staff. This concludes my presentation.
Does any of the commissioners have any questions for staff? I guess, Matt, could you please just make sure, I'm not sure what was included on the website to access. Can you just confirm what area we are discussing as far as the total?
Yes, and like I said, I do have the de-annexation, and it shows the area with the map and everything.
Right. The map we were provided was bigger, was that?
It's included in the de-annexation, which is the same.
Perfect. I was just making sure if-
It's not the same, but it's the same.
Right. I was just making sure that anybody-
With the exception of the lower of the JMAX, that is not part of-
Right. That's what I'm trying to clarify. Okay, perfect.
So, I have a question, I guess, since this will eventually feed along. So, and this was, I'm still trying to clarify with regards to the top part of the parcel. You said that top part, including the sliver, the whole kind of top part, is owned by Idaho Power. So can you kind of tell us why one part is de-annexed? So basically, they have the same owner, but one de-annexes and one annexes. Right? Like, so can you kind of tell us the logic behind that? I mean, from your correspondence with Idaho Power, what are they thinking? I mean, since they're kind of the owner of both of the properties?
Merrill's had a lot of conversations with Idaho Power, so we can keep-
Because it's just a bit odd, I'm just thinking.
Merrill Quill, the Public Works Engineer for the city of Pocatello. It may look off right now, but if you go back just a few months, when it was de-annexed, Idaho Power did not own that parcel, the bigger parcel of property. They owned this little sliver of property. So, the original owner of that, and being able to serve, and I was just reading the de-annexation ordinance from the city of Chubbuck, that basically said because of the cost, after evaluating the cost to serve these properties between the county and the city of Pocatello and the city of Chubbuck, it looked like the best solution, most economic solution, was to serve the properties from the city of Pocatello side and their utilities. The bigger parcel, that was part of it, was the bigger parcel, is they may have some stuff on that corner there at Venture Way and Fairgrounds Road that would need to be served. So, in their agreements, and we are going to get a copy of that, those closing documents and that, that was to have all of this annexed into Pocatello, and that was our understanding. So we're getting that, those documents, but it's for that, it's for serving the property, and the little sliver at the end isn't ever going to be, it's got a Transformers and substation on it, which won't have any other utilities to it, that's public utilities and not needing to be served. Therefore, there was really no need for it to be de-annexed from Chubbuck and annexed into Pocatello, so the revenues could continue to remain for that parcel in Chubbuck for those reasons, because again, it was not, it wasn't needed to be served by sewer or water.
Okay. So it's basically a service-
Yeah. A lot of it has to do with the services and how they can serve that property. The bigger property will have, possibly have some facilities, needs on it, and will need to have water and sewer services to it, depending on how they progress with that, and so it's the need for the services.
Can I ask another follow-up question, and this is just for clarification? So, that sliver of land is providing revenues to Chubbuck, and-
The one being that was-
But the service cost is actually covered by Pocatello.
Explain, please.
So, I mean, your last comment was saying that, you know, the sliver of land, you know, there was no interest of de-annexing Chubbuck. And Chubbuck, of course, if they're paying revenues on this particular property, don't want to also de-annex, if they're not responsible for servicing it, but they just receive the revenue for it. Now, in terms of Pocatello, why are we, why is the Pocatello taxpayers, you know, servicing this area?
We're not servicing that small sliver.
Yeah, we're not, but we're servicing the other area that's still owned by, is there any revenue that's generated that also accrues back to Pocatello?
Yeah, they'll be on the bigger piece if it is annexed into Pocatello. The city of Pocatello taxpayers will get the revenue from the bigger piece.
Okay.
And I just want to clarify that Chubbuck is able, well, there really isn't any sewer or water that has to go to the sliver.
Right.
And so, it wasn't a burden on Chubbuck like the larger plot may be, because it can be developed further.
That's our understanding, yes, and that's why it remained in Chubbuck.
Okay, I think that, do you have any more questions about that, or anybody else about? One other question, Merrill, you might want to be the, I just want to clarify, during our clarification meeting, we discussed more than just water and sewer, but also maintenance for these things, and road, and snow removal and garbage, and you clarified that there are several areas like this in Pocatello, and that memorandum of understanding is made between the city and the county that make those things work, and you don't see that being an issue with this area either.
I do not. It will be just a continuation, and this will be added to that understanding of who takes care of what, as far as like the snow removal and so forth there. Now, if there was major things that had to happen, they come together, just like they have done on other roads in town, and the county and the city work together to do their fair share on both sides. For instance, if they had to pave and overlay, that's what they do. They share the equipment, and they have those agreements in place that they can do that.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for staff from commissioners? Just one last time, I want to make sure that there has been no additional correspondence received.
There is none.
Thank you. So at this time, I would like to call anybody forward with testimony who are supporting the application. Please state your name and address.
Brian Ball with McCormick Ranch, 547 Partridge Lane in Lexburg, Idaho. I'm in support of this, and maybe it just helps clarify a little bit that the two parcels that you're talking about, J&amp;D Partnership, they had agreed to have it de-annexed and annexed into the city of Pocatello before Idaho Power bought them. Idaho Power saw a need after the fact for that property, and that's why they purchased it, and they realized that it was contingent upon, or it included this de-annexation and annexation into the city of Pocatello, and it was for easement issues. We left the city of Chubbuck because they couldn't service the property, it was going to be too burdensome. We really wanted to come into Pocatello to work with the city and keep things contiguous with what North Gate has going to the north, and if you have any questions, I'd love to answer them.
Can I ask you one question?
Sure.
So the de-annexation, is that an application process as well?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Any others in support of the application? Those uncommitted to the application? Please state your name and address.
Maxine West, 2487 Satterfield Drive, Pocatello, Idaho. I'm JMAX, I'm just fact-finding on what is happening here and what it will do with my prices.
Unfortunately, I don't, and none of us are real estate or attorneys, so I don't know that we can answer that.
Well, going from county, add taxes to mixed-use, what will that be?
Staff, is that a question you could answer?
Yeah, I can answer that. So it's just a comprehensive plan map designation. So it doesn't change, it's still going to have whatever the county has there as far as their designation, if and when that is annexed in the future. That may have, we don't, but the city doesn't get involved with taxes part of it, but the comprehensive plan map should not have any impact as far as taxes or anything.
Okay. So, except for our next agenda item, is the annexation of that?
Yeah, but JMAX is not part of the annexation.
Okay.
So I will continue to stay county ab?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, there is a map that was part of the next agenda item that was annexation and the zoning designation, that actually should not have had the JMAX, your property on that. So that extends from basically McCormick Ranch down to, is that southern part?
Correct.
That is not part of the annexation.
You are more than welcome to have my new map, so you can see that you're not in it.
And then with that, can I ask for clarification on the acreage? You said it went from 45.94 to 54?
It was just a typo.
Okay.
So it's the 45.94, and in the agenda, those two numbers were just transposed, so I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay.
The acreage is 45.94, more or less.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any more testimony by those uncommitted to the application?
This is the JMAX, this is your property.
Any testimony by those opposed to the application?
It is part of the plan map. So if this is ever de-annexed in the future, this would probably go next to us.
Okay.
So at this time, I would like, is there any rebuttal from the applicant? No?
No, we're both.
Okay. At this time, I will declare the public hearing closed, and now we have some time to discuss this. I guess, how would you guys like to proceed? And can I just say, I feel like, I really think it's important that if we make a motion to approve this, that we include, that we, that the county, when it goes on to the next, the city, when it goes on to the next step, receives documentation stating that Idaho Power is good with this annexation.
I concur with that.
Okay. Anything else?
I have no issues with that. I think that's all right.
Okay.
I concur.
Just for clarification, if I may, Chairwoman is, so this is with the comprehensive plan map. I think he said the annexation.
Oh, thank you, yes. Comprehensive plan map change. I think we should do the same thing for the next agenda item also, but yes.
So you do want that condition on there?
Yes.
It would apply to both.
I don't think there's, yeah, yes, I do.
So are we adding a condition?
It will be in the motion if we motion to approve it, yes.
Okay. I just need to add one other thing that, and when somebody does make a motion, that you'll need to add and to authorize the Chair to sign the findings back tonight for the public hearings tonight, okay?
I can do that.
Yeah, can you add that too, to the motions in the documents, or Matt, when you do that?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other-
I think I meant to do that, and I got pushed, and it got left out, so.
Okay. Any other questions? Any other discussion? Like to entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion. So, I make a motion to recommend approval of the application of the city-initiated comprehensive plan amendment, designating the subject of 45.94 acres, plus and minus, to mixed-use, finding it meets the standards under Code Section 70.02.120. In addition, I would add the clause that Idaho Power documentation approving the annexation is provided and submitted to the City Council upon its application, and documentation needs to be approved and signed off by the Chair.
Thank you.
And I didn't hear a word.
His condition was that, he read it exactly as it is in the staff report, with the condition that you add the clause that Idaho Power documentation approving the annexation is provided and submitted to the city with their application? As well as-
The documentation to be checked and approved and signed off by the Chair.
You got that?
No, I can't hear him.
Oh. And to check and approve, and to be signed off by the Chair.
Okay. To authorize the Chair?
Yes, and to authorize the Chair.
I second that motion.
We have a motion by Ru, a second by Roberts. Aslan, will you call a vote?
Ru?
Yes.
Roberts?
Aye.
Chanda?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Your motion carries.
Thank you, everyone. So at this time, we will move on to Agenda Item Number Four, a public hearing for the McCormick Ranch at-all annexation. Time has been set aside to hear comments from the public concerning the request for McCormick Ranch, Teton Communications, and JD Partnership to annex and zone 45.94 acres, more or less, of land located east of I-15 and west of Porton of Wellness Complex. The proposed zoning designation is residential, commercial, professional. So at this time, I will declare the public hearing open, and we would like to hear from the applicant, please.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, Commissioned Members. My name is Brady Smith with Rocky Mountain Engineering and Surveying, 600 East Oak Street, Pocatello, Idaho, 83201, here tonight, representing the applicant McCormick Ranch, Teton Communications, and JD Partnership on this application. I don't really want to add a whole lot more than what you already found from the previous application, as most everything was touched on, but I just want to kind of mention that a lot of this was just more of a timing issue, because it was hung up in Chubbuck's court for so long, 18 months or better. Obviously, the development group here would have much rather just had this be seamless, and when it all started, it was moving pretty rapidly, everybody was on board with it, and then it's like we hit hurdle after hurdle after hurdle, trying to appease the city, prove to them that it made much more sense to be in Pocatello versus Chubbuck, and anyway, that's why we landed where we landed, and that's why some of the land acquisitions were, you know, happening when they happened, and it just all didn't seamlessly come together like we'd hoped, but that's really the nature of it. And so, those that are on this application are obviously in favor of this to happen. We feel like this piece, in its entirety, as shown, is much more serviceable in the city of Pocatello, and we hope that that will also, you know, with the revenues generated and the tax base that is created, will be a positive for the city, you know, in conjunction with the other things that are going up in that area. We have read through the conditions, and also to your point about the added condition that was previously added, we're okay with that as well. We see no reason why that couldn't be handled in terms of the closing documentation, because it was, as Brian mentioned, part of their closing documents, so they are aware that that land that they now own is in the city of Pocatello. And so, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Commissioner, any questions for the applicant? These are probably going to sound repetitives, but I just want to make sure it's on record that we've asked these questions about each agenda item. Can you please verify that the initial zoning map that was provided was incorrect, and that the area that you guys are requesting to be annexed, sorry, let me use the proper term, does not include JMAX property?
Excuse me, that is correct, Madam Chairman. The areas intended do not include JMAX. It just is McCormick Ranch, JD Partnership, which is now Idaho Power and Teton Communications.
So it's all north of that large ravine that's about at the center of the-
Correct.
-flying Y. That's native Pocatello talk also, so, thank you.
Is there a reason for that?
It was just a mistake.
Okay.
Somebody else owns this, and the line was just drawn larger than it was supposed to be, that's why this is different than what we see in our-
You can see kind of a dissecting blue line that goes through there. That is truly should be the southern-
It was just an error.
Okay.
The southern boundary of what's requested in the 45.94 acres.
I guess my other question would be that when the owners of this property want to develop, they understand that they'll be providing upgrades, infrastructure, and all the right-of-way sidewalk, curb, gutter, they understand that.
That's correct.
Any other questions for the applicant?
No.
Okay, thank you, Brady.
Thank you.
You're welcome to stay there, because there might be more questions to come. So at this time, I would like to request presentation from staff.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, Commissioned Members. Matthew Lewis, Senior Planner at the Planning Department. Pursuant to Idaho State Code, Chapter 50-222, 4.8, consent to annexation has been given by owners authorized, agents, Brian Ball representing McCormick Ranch LLC, Tony Haflo representing Teton Communications Inc., and Ryan Hancock representing J&amp;D Partnership, have submitted an application to annex and zone 4.94 acres, more or less, of land located east of Interstate 15, south of Venture Way, and west of the Porton of Wellness Complex. The proposed zoning for the property is residential, commercial, professional, which is not outcharacterized with current and future development in the area. The southernmost properties in the North Gate Development are zoned RCP with a designation of mixed-use. Possible land uses may include eating and drinking establishment, establishments, consumer uses, and multiple dwelling units, which are complementary to the surrounding land uses. The subject parcels were de-annexed- The subject parcels were de-annexed from the city of Chubak, September 1st, 2021, per ordinance number 8 through 35. Applicants are requesting annexation in the city of Pocatello due to the inability to provide services to these parcels without substantial cost. All property owners within a 300-foot radius of the land to be reza, or to be annexed and zoned have been provided notice of the public hearing in order that they may provide comment on the proposed application. Notice was also published in the Idaho State Journal and two signs were posted on the subject property. As of completion of the staff report and the public hearing this evening, no written comments have been received by staff. Staff concludes that the annexation request concurrent of residential professional, residential commercial professional is compliant with the Pocatello Code, Section 7002.100, annexations. Should the commission recommend approval of the subject application, staff recommends seven conditions provided in the staff report be attached. This concludes my presentation.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for staff?
Yes, I have one question. So the land that's outside or the southern part, I know the landowner is here, but is the southern part part of Bana County or is it Bana County? So it's also been, has it, has that land also been de-annexed by Chubak?
No.
It was never annexed by Chubak, ever?
Good question.
Okay. I mean, is there ever a possibility that the owners can actually annex that part of property to Chubak?
Well, we're, that's why we're providing, one of the reasons we're providing within the comprehensive plan map, so that, again, it's a whole service thing, right? And so if it's annexed, if they come and they request annexation, then it's within our comprehensive plan map. So we're de-annexing.
So the, our comprehensive plan also actually covers the land below the current-
Yes, that's, that's what's being proposed as part of the first part of agenda number three.
Okay. Okay, great, thank you. Thank you for the clarification.
Any other questions for staff? At this ti, oh, has there been any additional correspondence received?
There is none.
At this time, I would like to hear testimony from those supporting the application. This time, I would like to hear testimony for those uncommitted on the application. At this time, I would like to hear testimony for those opposed to the application. Any rebuttal by the applicant? At this time, I will declare the public hearing closed. So, Commission, how would you like to proceed? As I've stated before, I think the same condition should be applied, that the city council, when this application goes to them, they receive documentation of Idaho Power approving of this annexation, of this, yes, annexation. Any other discussion or? Then I would like to entertain a motion.
I would make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of the application from McCormick Ranch LLC, Teton Communications Incorporated, and J&amp;D Partnership to annex the property in question located east of Interstate 15, south of Venture Way, and west of the Portnet Wellness Complex to be zoned residential, commercial, professional. Finding the application does meet the standards for approval under Chapter 17.02.110 of Pocatello Municipal Code. With the seven conditions listed in the staff report and with an additional clause that Idaho Power documentation approving the annexation is provided and submitted to the city council with authorization of the chair to sign off.
Okay, thank you. Before I declare this meeting adjourned, I would just, I want to make sure you know that this is a first step, the applicant still has to go to city council. Staff would be-
You have to second.
Oh, we have to take a motion, we're not even done. Sorry, guys, I'm jumping ahead. We have a first by Rue and a second by Phillips. Ace, will you call vote?
Rue?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Chanda?
Yes.
Roberts?
Aye.
Lucy Carries?
Sorry, now.
That's okay.
That, I just know that it seemed kind of confusing. They're so, they're so great at answering questions and making sure you understand and, and make sure that you understand everything that's going on with that, so don't be afraid to ask them. And with that, I would like to adjourn of the meeting, thank you.
Thank you.